Good afternoon and welcome to the New York City Council Committee on Fire and Emergency Management. At this time, place your phone on vibrate or silent mode. If you want to submit testimony, submit it to testimony@council.nyc.gov. Once again, that's testimony@council.nyc.gov. At any time during this hearing, please do not approach the dais. Thank you for your cooperation. Chair, we are ready to begin.
Good afternoon. I'm Councilmember Joanne Areola and I'm chairperson of the Committee on Fire and Emergency Management. I am joined today by my colleague Kevin Riley. New York City's Emergency Management, also known as NISIM, is responsible for coordinating New York City's emergency planning and response for all types of scales of emergencies, including extreme weather events such as coastal storms and flash flooding. As seen during a number of heavy thunderstorms in recent years, the city faces ongoing issues of extreme flash flooding during periods of heavy rain. These events, which have proven deadly at times, present challenges to the city's aging infrastructure and the ability of our city to protect residents in need. Flash flooding from heavy rainfall is not a new phenomenon in New York City. However, the frequency and intensity of such events has increased in recent years. These incidents have created dangerous conditions resulting in loss of life and significant damage to public and private property. Throughout the city, concrete surfaces, the relative lack of vegetation, and large areas of impermeable surfaces exacerbate the risk of flooding caused by heavy rainfall events. Substantial flooding on arterial roadways and local streets have trapped drivers throughout the city and placed civilians and first responders at significant risk. The New York City subway system has also become increasingly vulnerable to flooding during heavy rainfalls during the system through the station entrances and ventilation systems, causing significant disruptions to transit service and dangerous conditions. Additionally, in certain parts of the city, below-grade portions of buildings have faced significant damage due to flash flooding, which can cause significant property damage and threaten safety of individuals in basement-level apartments. Since Hurricane Sandy in 2012, the city has invested significant resources to improving infrastructure and preparedness in areas of cities the cities vulnerable coastal flooding. These vital investments will provide much-needed support and resiliency to vulnerable communities on our shorelines. However, we need similar focus on investments to ensure the city is taking the necessary steps to protect communities that are known to be at high risk for flooding. Although the solutions will likely be different than those need to combat coastal flooding, the seriousness of the threat of life and property warrants similar investment. To that end, the committee is interested in how the city has prepared for and addressed severe weather emergencies that produce flash flooding, particularly in vulnerable areas. Additionally, the committee is hearing Intro Number 807 sponsored by Councilmember and Majority Whip Silvina Brooks-Powers. This legislation would require NISIM to establish a pilot program for utilizing emergency shelter locations for the purpose of providing refuge prior to and during flash flooding events. We look forward to hearing the testimony from the administration and examining the detailed planning that is required to guarantee that all New Yorkers remain safe when facing potential flash flood events. I'd also like to note that we've been joined by my colleague Lynn Schulman. Our council will now swear you in. Please raise your right hand.
Do you affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth in your testimony before the council and answer honestly to councilmember questions? Seeing you affirm, you may go ahead. Thank you.
Okay. You can hear me here, right? Okay, perfect. Thank you. Good morning or good afternoon, Chairperson Ariel and the members of the committee. I am Heather Reuter, Deputy Commissioner of Planning and Resiliency at New York City Emergency Management. I am joined today by our Deputy Commissioner of External Affairs, David Schmidt. To understand how the city responds to flash flood emergencies, it's important to understand the science behind it and the challenges with respect to flash flood prediction. It is difficult to predict flash floods far in advance as they're inherently uncertain with respect to heavy rainfall predictions. There's very little lead time, perhaps only an hour or so, to accurately identify the precise location and intensity of rainfall. This means that the National Weather Service might be able to identify flash flood threats for the tri-state area or for the city as a whole with enough lead time to activate our flash flood plan and warn the public, but predicting rainfall at smaller scales such as a borough, neighborhood, or street level is not possible until the storm is barreling down on the city. The high variability of where rain falls means flood advisories and flash flood warnings are issued only an hour or so in advance, or in some cases, as the storm is ongoing. This is compounded by the fact that small changes in the intensity, movement, and development of the storm can change in the... Sorry. Development of storm results can have large changes in the forecast. A shift only a few miles can be the difference between minimal or major or potentially catastrophic impact. No two storms will ever be the same. Each will leave its own unique impact on the city even if the weather patterns between storms are similar. This is to say that future storms will produce flooding in areas that perhaps haven't seen significant flooding in the past. When we consider these factors and layer them into our vast and varied landscape of New York City, in addition to the forecast challenges and variability of heavy rainfall, you begin to understand all that we take into account as we plan and respond to storms. The city first released its Flashlight Emergency Plan in 2009, which is most activated of our emergency plans. Throughout the years, emergency management's made improvements in our response strategies in addressing flood risk, especially following the catastrophic events of post-tropical storm Ida in 2021 and the September 2023 flash flood event. This includes an embedded meteorologist within our agency, the hiring of a third-party weather vendor to supplement our coordination with the National Weather Service, and revamping the Flashlight Emergency Plan to have a risk-based and scaled approach. The Flashlight Emergency Plan has expanded its risk-based strategies by incorporating the city's stormwater resiliency maps for targeted catch basin cleaning, monitoring chronic flood locations, de-watering operations, disseminating public information and travel advisories, augmenting executive decision-making through city leadership coordination calls, and utilizing and supporting the advancement of the city's flood sensor network FloodNet to give us real-time flood information. This risk-based approach allows the city to adjust its response to address common events that can cause nuisance flooding to scaling our operations for the more severe events. Emergency management has also enhanced public warning capabilities via the Notify-NYC program, including the creation of new message types encouraging rain preparedness such as notifications asking New Yorkers to help clear catch basins. In addition to these messages, we've also increased our focus on basement apartment notifications and risk, including the development of a Notify-NYC subscription group that offers targeted messaging regarding flooding in basement apartments. New Yorkers interested in this information can enroll in this group and unlike other groups will receive phone calls all times a day, including during the overnight hours, to alert them of risk in basement flooding. All of these enhancements to notify NYC, including the new basement notifications, are offered in multiple languages. As always, we would appreciate support from the council and getting the word out about these capabilities and encouraging enrollment in Notify-NYC, especially for our basement alerts group as increased enrollment will assist us in reaching even more vulnerable New Yorkers. Our approach to communication also leverages a multitude of other platforms as well, activated by emergency management as well as our partners, to relay crucial information promptly and efficiently. These platforms range from social media outlets like Twitter and Instagram, additional systems like our advanced warning system which disseminates information to people with disabilities and other access and functional needs, and to partners in the private and nonprofit sector and all elected throughout the city. This ensures a comprehensive and effective public response to address immediate life safety needs. We've also added flood alarms as a low-cost response tool, similar to smoke alarms and backed up by our FEMA-led post-Ida mitigation study. City agencies led by DEPs and supplemented by emergency management have distributed alarms to New Yorkers, which they can place in their basement to alert them when flooding is occurring in their residence, so they know when to move to higher ground and a space they pre-identify as part of their household's emergency plan. In the aftermath of a large-scale flash flood event, we will transition into the recovery phase, rigorously working to ensure services are restored where needed and evaluating the full scope of damage to infrastructure and buildings. We will concurrently activate other key operations such as sheltering, reception centers, damage assessment, or community outreach while tracking restoration. The report damage tool was newly launched last hurricane season along with revamping the 311 severe weather question tool, with these link callers to direct services when reporting damage from the event. These tools collect information such as building damage that could be used to request state and federal recovery aid or 311 service requests related to the swarm such as backup sewers, structural damage to buildings, and heat and hot water complaints. Both tools can be activated in anticipation of incoming weather and amplified through all our social media channels, Notify-NYC, Strengthening Communities Network, elected officials and community boards, and further amplified by City Hall and other agency partners. The numbers received from this tool along with the report to the EOCA aid in triggering recovery operations such as activating our damage assessment working group, muck-out support, sheltering, or debris cleanup. If impacts are severe enough, they can meet the threshold to have New York State request FEMA's individual assistance or for residents or a Small Business Administration declaration which provides low-interest loans to renters, homeowners, and nonprofits and business owners to help with the recovery, repair, and other losses. In both instances, state and federal representatives and/or SBA will then send representatives to assess damage and determine if the event meets the threshold for the declaration. We have deep concern regarding introduction 807 related to the scientific limitations as well as the potential for scope and danger to New Yorkers as it's currently written. All of the scientific and operational concerns we detailed through this testimony highlight the low predictability and highly localized but not predictable to geo-target the nature of flash flooding. This underlines the impracticality of developing and operating flash flood shelters in New York City pre-flash flood. The concept of opening a shelter before the flash flooding occurs is fraught with scientific and operational efficiencies relating to the timing, location, and resource allocation. The entire city can be at flash flood risk. We cannot safely advise people to leave their home and go to a predetermined location that we cannot guarantee will have the safe path given the short notice of localized impacts, which are almost in real time. That's not how flash floods work, and we have laid this out in the testimony today in terms of the forecast capabilities for flash floods. Additionally, piloting flash flood shelters in 10 neighborhoods pre-emergency would consume resources to limit areas at the trade-off of a flexible response to serve the whole community. The entire city can be under a flash flood risk and the impacts are only known as they are happening, the legislation would force the city to open pre-designated sites as well as at a distance from an impacted person's home, and the journey to that site could be significantly more dangerous than moving to higher ground or going to a known safe location close by to them that they can see as not impacted. The power of water is tremendous and extremely dangerous. Therefore, emergency management's adamantly opposed to the proposed legislation. We would like to continue the discussions with the sponsor to further explain the nuances of emergency planning as well as work deeper on education and partnerships in communities. As discussed through this testimony, there is significant outreach and community engagement that's already being done and will continue to be strongly pushed throughout all communities in the city. Through the Ready New York Program, we educate New Yorkers about hazards that they may face in New York City and prepare for all types of emergency by writing an emergency plan, choosing a meeting place, and gathering supplies for your home, and to prepare a go-bag in case they need to leave their home in a hurry. Emergency management goes out to meet communities in various locations every day of the year, schools, houses of worship, town halls, community meetings, and more, and we always stress the necessity for everyone to have an emergency plan, including two meeting places, one which should be a 24/7 location and of awareness and comfort to them. This is especially important for people who live in basement apartments or low-lying areas. In addition to being registered for Notify-NYC, they should have a plan on where they will go during a flooding emergency. Taking measures such as understanding one's personal risk, investigating in flood alarms, and protecting your home or buildings can help with immediate safety during these events. As we have seen with other aspects of severe weather, climate change and its impacts continue to pose new challenges to New York City, and city agencies are working to adjust our plans and outreach to New Yorkers to address these hazards. We continue to pursue giving New Yorkers the most up-to-date information on the potential dangers from flash flooding so they can make any adjustments to their activities as needed. Thank you for this opportunity to testify today. We will now take your questions.
Thank you so much. I would like to... I'd like to address the bill 807, which I'm currently signing on to because I think it is necessary. I live in an area and I also represent an area that is prone to flash flooding, coastal flooding, climate flooding, any type of flooding possible. We get flooded. And Councilmember Silvina Brooks-Powers, who is the prime sponsor of this bill, is my adjacent council member. So I just don't understand in your testimony and your resistance to this bill where you can identify any place for any other reason that you can't identify any place in advance to put people where they can be safe or give them advance notice, and that you don't have the geometric ability to do so when I know that that's not true, I know the operation that you have. So people shouldn't have to say, "Well, maybe I can go to Far Rockaway High School because it's on higher ground," and I'm just making that up, but Far Rockaway High School doesn't know that they have to have a super there to open it up. People in our communities are at risk every time there is a flood. We need to have places identified. We need places that we can hand out to our constituents that say, "This is the place that you can go because this is at higher ground." Not at the time when you are leaving to flee because your life is in danger, but you can make an intelligent decision to go prior to with your family and your belongings and be there to weather the storm. So I think that you can do this. I think that your argument is not compelling, and I think that instead of us having to retool the bill, I think you have to rethink what the community needs. So Councilmember and Majority Whip Powers gave a few questions that she'd asked, and I will ask them for her. The first one is inadequate draining and significant contributing factors to localized inland flooding. It's on that topic. Does the city work to improve drainage, mitigate flood risk in areas that are historically prone to flash floods? So do you work with DEP and other agencies to make sure that that is taking place?
Yes, and thank you for that response. I'll answer that specific question. How do we take drainage into account? So as I mentioned, we've our flash flood emergency plan, our most active plan, has gone through a large revamp to be risk-based. And so one of the core strategies, which it's always been, is the catch basin cleaning. So that's really the targeted drainage areas that are known to be high areas that need to remain open during these flash flood events. So DEP is a critical partner in our plan. We work very closely with them, and we're committed to updating our plan annually, and the main thing we look at is the catch basin cleaning targeted areas. So that is... There's quite a lot of information that goes into helping create that assessment, so our plan is fresh with that information.
Okay. How does NISIM conduct targeted outreach to individuals living or working in areas that are prone to significant flooding?
So as mentioned, there are areas of prone flooding. So we... When the forecast is happening, people need to know their risk, and we will say people in basement apartments or below-grade spaces are really going to be at the greatest risk of float, especially if they know they're in a low-lying area. So signing up for the Notify program in the basement group is really our key way of making sure we can do 24/7 messaging when a real storm is coming down. In addition, anyone can sign up for these messages. You don't have to be in that area, but it's also signing up for it. The Notify program will ensure that you get our weather alerts, and so you're always up-to-date on the information, remembering that local information's really not going to be available of expected greatest impact until we're within hours or in the storm. So it's going to be broad areas at risk.
And if you don't have Twitter or X?
So Notify can go through email. You can call 311, and then you can sign up for Notify and receive it through email, text, or phone call. So it does not have to be social media.
You mentioned basement apartments. And you know, with the city of Yes Now, there'll be a push to legalize basement apartments. Do you feel that this is safe with the type of flooding that we're seeing in basements and the lack of outreach to people who live in basement apartments and the lack of notification and the lack of places for them to go during a flood incident?
What I can say is that we're working with the groups of City of Yes on the legislation that was just passed to make sure that emergency management's a connected partner through the programming of those legislation.
Okay. Would NISIM ever advise individuals living or working in below-grade spaces or in otherwise flood-prone areas to seek higher ground or shelter outside of their homes due to an anticipated rainfall or flood?
Yes. So if you are in a below-grade space, work, home, staying alert on the weather through all the different mechanisms when we say that there's a threat, especially below-grade spaces, that's the time to go to a pre-identified location that's higher ground and is comfortable for that individual and business.
But they're learning that what, on television? Or if they don't have any other means, they don't have social media, they don't have email, and there are people that are like this, they don't have this. So they're learning this from their... From channel whatever news.
Right. So for all emergencies, we really try to focus on having a network to stay informed, and that does mean something different for different individuals. So whether it's your neighbors, it's your community group, it's your house of worship, if you have service providers, we work really closely. We have something called the Advanced Warning System. That's our AWS program, and that's really targeted to work with all the umbrella organizations that service the most vulnerable New Yorkers, so they can reach their clients as well.
Does that include a door-to-door in those areas where the low-lying areas are? I mean, they're definitely identified. And in fairness, I've done that with your commissioner and deputy commissioner. We've gone door-to-door, the three of us together, in low-lying areas, but do you have a team that goes out and goes door-to-door in those areas knocking on doors and really urging people in advance to go to higher ground? I don't want to see people being pulled out of basement windows. I'd like to see people already safe when the floods hit. So what's your capability for that?
So we're trying to work on all capabilities, and we can talk through how to reach New Yorkers before an event, but I can't speak to that specific one.
So you don't have a team that goes out? That's the... That would be the answer if you can't speak to it. How would using precincts, firehouses, or shelter locations mitigate the concerns about safety during flash floods? And would the postponed... The proposed pilot program align with that approach? So we have precincts, we have firehouses. So would it align with the approach of this bill? That's the first question. And how many precincts and firehouses are currently designated as potential emergency shelters for flash floods? And do these facilities have the capacity to serve the vulnerable population in the flood zone areas?
So maybe just to also step back and talk about flood risk. So it's also, I think, really important to understand coastal flood risk versus flash flood risk. We have done quite a lot, obviously, over many years to communicate our evacuation zones in areas predicted to have coastal flood risk, which also come with forecasts that can be days out and give us ample opportunity to stand up the operations in anticipation of the response. Flash flooding, it's a different animal in terms of the weather and the variability and the meteorological tools. So I just want to preface that ability to say we have done an extreme amount of work on our coastal storm planning to have pre-identified sites and socialize and communicate and make that information available for knowing your risk and your zone. With low-lying coastal flood areas vulnerable to inland flooding, it can affect citywide. It has a much broader scale, and the forecast is also going to be much larger scale in anticipation. So knowing in that storm where the area of greatest impact will be will be in it or right at the heels of the storm when that's happening. So I just, you know, in terms of just thinking through or kind of relaying the challenges, I just wanted to clear that. So in terms... But we do work with all of our public safety partners and making sure that we can utilize and work with them in an emergency, and if it's also communicating sites that we know that are going to be open to the public for a safe place or a safe haven during an emergency, we will do that as well.
But the communication of those places, to get to those places, I mean, I'm an elected official, and I don't have a list of those places, and I could not communicate that to my constituents. And I don't know if my colleagues... I've been joined by Councilmember Oswald Feliz, but I don't know if my colleagues get a list of those places. What are the precincts and firehouses that are being used currently during floods as safe havens for people who need to be relocated?
So we will work with police and fire on catastrophic events and scenarios to coordinate with them during a flash flood event and how their facilities could be part of a suite of options of where high ground is and a safe place, but you shouldn't wait for the storm. We can also communicate that today where any place in your community might be a resource for you.
No, but what precincts and firehouses are already identified?
I'm happy to work on providing a list of fire and police stations that are throughout the city and in your jurisdiction, and we can talk further about how that could... How to work through that for some of our hazard planning.
I think that your answers prove how important that Intro 807 is, because there really isn't a plan. And I will now yield to my colleagues if they have any questions. Councilmember Riley.
Thank you, Chair. The Chair asks pretty much a lot and shares the same sentiments, and I just want to work in collaboration. I represent the Northeast Bronx, which is adjacent to Councilmember Ma Marotta, which the Chair is asking questions about her district as well. We're built around lakes, rivers, and ponds. Usually, when I got elected in 2021, there were a lot of rainfall, waterfalls that were happening, and I had people that resided in homes that were flooded out. And the response that they received, they didn't really get a lot of assistance because they were in a specific catchment area that the city focuses on. So I would just ask, you know, moving forward, that we could kind of focus on different areas and work in collaboration to kind of get the message out there to apply for programs like Notify-NYC. We have a great CBO in my district called Bronx Neighborhood Housing Services. I'm pretty sure that should be like an avenue that you guys could collaborate with. Anytime homeowners are going through any kind of traumatic situations, they usually go to Neighborhood Housing Services within the district. So that would be a great avenue to partner with, collaborating with our office so we could collaborate with neighbors to let them know about these programs. The issue within our city is that we have great... We have a lot of good programs. It's just that a lot of people in the city just don't know about it, they're not cognizant about it. So I guess a question I have is what other forms of outreach has the city done with other CBOs within New York City to make sure that they are getting the message out there about Notify-NYC?
Yeah, so we do, and we would love to work with you and your community and work on how we can help bring our message to increase enrollment, awareness, and emergency planning for all your constituents. In terms of working with CBOs, we have a suite of different programs. So we have our Strengthening Communities, I'd say is our flagship one, where we've been working with selected community groups to help build community-based plans, and then we can use that group in emergencies to help amplify messaging and outreach.
Do you do any partnership with HBD to do placement of anyone who's being displaced because of flooding?
We work with HBD on an ongoing basis whenever there's displacement and emergency need. So we will work with all the agencies to come up to work on those response operations.
Thank you. And just want to stay on the record, I think as a city, we do need to do a better job with emergency responses. I know it's not speaking about fires here today, but I had a ridiculous fire in the Wallace Avenue in my district where we have tons of residents who were displaced. They went into a hotel system, and then they were told that they had to leave the hotel after a certain while. We have been doing, you know, great partnership with city agencies, but a lot of them feel like they've been forgotten about. They're taxpaying citizens, and they feel like, you know, telling them to leave a hotel when we provide so much shelter for other people is something that's not really, you know, adequate for them. So I just feel like moving forward, we need to have a more of an adequate plan for our everyday New Yorkers who are going through emergency responses. Right? Thank you so much, Chair, for this opportunity.
Councilmember Schulman and then De La Rosa, who has joined us for the committee hearing. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Chair. I represent a district in Central Queens that is... I represent a district in Central Queens that is, no, no, no. The, I just want to make sure you're paying attention.
I'm sorry, yes.
That's okay. So I represent Central Queens, my district is 29, it's Forest Hills, Kew Gardens, Richmond Hill. And it's not known as a flood zone, so, but in, in 2020, it had, there was a major storm. And so, and there was so much flooding, I mean, people were flooding out of their houses, there was major damage. Somebody actually died in my district who was in a basement apartment in a large high-rise building. So I want to make sure, and by the way, when we, it was the previous administration, so it wasn't this one, but resources, I mean, I was on staff, I wasn't a council member at the time, I was on staff in the Speaker's office, and I had to go to the administration and beg for resources because they said, oh, well, that area is not known as a flood zone, and, you know, so we want to make sure. And, and I don't happen to have civic associations in my district, as it turns out, for the most part. So we need to really have a plan for areas like that. And there was another storm subsequent to that where there was a lot of flooding, not as much as that time. So I want to make sure that that happens. And we have, you know, I'd like for you, if you could supply us, I know you don't have it now, with a list of the civic organizations and other, other organizations that you work with, because then what we could do is we could take a look and see if we want to make additions to it, because I think that that's very important. And especially with climate change, there's all kinds of things that could happen. So we want to be on top of it and be prepared. I will make a comment that on February 19th, I am having a hearing. It was originally on a bill about cooling centers. It's going to be a much bigger hearing now. It's going to be about the public emergency response in general with DOHMH and everything, everything that's going on in the federal government, everything else of what we're going to do moving forward with a number of things. So I just want to let you know that so that you're prepared to answer some of those questions. But thank you.
Thank you. And we'll make sure to take back that request for the list of CBOs.
Councilmember Delarosa.
Thank you, Chair, and thank you all for being here. I represent Northern Manhattan, Washington Heights in Wood, in the northern part of the borough. And one of the things about my district, you know, the heights, is that there's a lot of, the topography is such that there's a lot of hills, but then that means there's also a lot of valleys. One of the things that we've seen, and we've worked with DEP closely on some of the major capital repairs that are needed for our street infrastructure, but what we've seen is a lot of pawning that happens at the bottom of the hills due to how quickly these floods are happening, more, most recently. We've had a lot of flooding damage. A lot of it is also impacting small businesses, because a lot of our businesses are either ground level or below. We have a lot of businesses that are, that have two floors. We're seeing a lot of damage. So my first question is, does the agency work with small business services and other sister agencies to do some proactive outreach in areas that are more prone to flood flashing? Flood, flash flooding? That's the first question.
Yeah, so we've worked with DEP to do targeted outreach in flood-risk communities and really worked to advance some of the strategies that I mentioned around flood alarms and deployables that also residents can take to help protect their properties too. So that's also something that we would appreciate the council to help us, is help promoting those strategies and also ways, if there's ways to partner in getting those into community members too.
One of the other issues that I'm concerned about, and I've been talking to other agencies about, including sanitation and the Department of Consumer and Worker Protection, is the way that our streets are being utilized right now. In my district, we have the proliferation of street car washers. And although they're not supposed to, they tap into the local hydrants and wash cars, and it's something that is proliferating. On one block in my district, you can find five of them, no matter how cold it is, no matter what the weather is. One of the things that this is causing is that the capacity in our catch basins is impacted. I'm wondering if within the plan to deal with flash flooding, your agency or DP is taking a look at the way that streets are being used, because it does impact the amount of water that our catch basins can take on when there is a flash flood.
I think that's something we'll have to go back with DEP to get back, back to you on that one.
And I'm having conversations right now on that specific issues with both Department of Consumer and Worker Protection, sanitation. DP knows about some of the issues, and I'd love for you all to also join some of the conversations we're having. Thank you. Thank you, Chair.
Let's get back to chronic flooding. How are chronic flooding locations identified and monitored by the city during a flash flood event? And does NISIM or DCAST maintain a list of city-managed buildings that are located in chronic flood locations?
So for catch basin cleaning, we work on with DEP to come up with the targeted areas, and there's a different information that feeds into it, but it's historic known impact or overflow. So all that is how we do targeted catch basin cleaning before a storm, and then they do have crews, advanced crews that are out as well during the event for response.
How many times during the year when it's not a climate event, do you go out with DEP to check those catch basins?
You'd have to speak to DEP about their maintenance program.
Well, you do it together, right? You're doing it in tandem?
So, no, we, we are not the ones physically going out and doing the cleaning. They're the ones going out and doing the cleaning also.
So in your conversations with them and working with that agency, how many times a year are they telling you that they're going out? Because we're always asking DEP to go out, they're very responsive. But if you're telling me that you're working with DEP for catch basins that are not being cleaned in high-flood-risk areas, and you have a list of these, I just want to know how often you check up, check in with DEP regarding those catch basins?
You'd have to speak to DEP about the maintenance, the ongoing maintenance of their catch basin.
I'm asking how many, how often do you check? Does NISIM check with DEP? Call DEP, hello, DEP? Have you gone out into X area, which is a known flood zone, and checked those, those catch basins? Does NISIM do that? Because that's what you're implying.
NISIM coordinates with the agency, so it's also sanitation, the Parks Department that go, and transportation that go out and clean catch basins in advance of when we activate the flash flood plan.
So do you, do you maintain a list of those, those city-managed buildings that are located in chronic flood areas? Do you have, do you maintain a list of buildings that are in chronic flood areas? Well, I'll be parochial. Let's talk about Shorefront Parkway in, in Rockaway, on, on the Rockaway Peninsula. Do you have a list somewhere that has the Dayton Towers, Surfside, and all the different buildings that are there that are prone to flooding?
We are able to do, we are able to provide that information to our partners as needed, and we can follow up with you about the status of that list.
So then you have a list?
I can follow up with you on the status.
You don't have a list? Okay, so then if you don't have a list, and you have to follow up with me, and that means that you cannot do public outreach, that means, and you don't, you, you work with DEP, but you don't know how many times a year they go out, that means that there's not real collaboration here. That's what I'm hearing. And I need more collaboration between NISIM and all the different agencies. Why? Because people's lives are being lost, and we're very reactionary, and I want to be pro-action. That's how we have to do things. I live in an area that is plagued by all different flooding. Councilmember Brooks-Powers, same story. Many of the other members who are in this body, same story. So either you're working together or you're not. And I don't want people being pulled out of basement apartments or having to leave their, their high-rise apartments, or leave their apartment buildings, or homes while there's floods, when there's no real evacuation plan, and there's no real evacuation signage. And we've been asking for this for a long time, and yet it's not there.
So I do want to say that flood risk is something that we're actively and always communicating, that information's provided by the city. There's different, again, the type of flood risk we're talking about, whether it's tidal, inland, coastal, that's all provided on the city flood hazard mapper. We also do have it on our website through our hazard mitigation plan. And we do provide an abundance of information on overlaying mapping and flood risk. Your, the specific list you're asking for is the one thing I think I'd have to follow, that's what I say to follow up on. But we do provide quite a lot of that information that is available for your constituents, your office, and partners to also take and use.
I would love to see it, I'd love to see it shared. I'm just going to give you a scenario, and I'd just like to know if you were involved in this. In my district, we have track work being done on the A train. We've worked with MTA and all different agencies to make sure that people can get to and from work, but this is a major flood zone. It goes through council member Brooks-Powers' district and my own. How involved was NISIM in creating an evacuation plan for the people of the Rockaway Peninsula and Broad Channel because of the lack of a train to get off that peninsula for the next 17 weeks? Was there any interaction with your agency at all?
I can't speak to, I'll have to get back to you after I consult with my colleagues.
Okay. I'm done. Are there any other questions? Josh, you can relieve the, the panel, and we can go to anyone who has, wants to ask questions from the public. I'd like you to remain, if you can, just to hear what the public has to say. It's not that many people.
We'll now turn to public testimony. If any individuals are in chambers that would like to testify, please go to the Sergeant in Arms and fill out a witness slip. Okay, we will, we will now turn to Zoom testimony. Christopher Leon Johnson.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, starting time.
Yeah, hello, my name is Christopher Leon Johnson. Thank you, Chair Orellola, for hosting this hearing this afternoon. I'm showing my opposition to Intro 807 that was introduced by Silvina Brooks-Power, because just like I heard the, the lady who was part of the OCEM, she just said that, like, you can't control, like, what a flash flood could do. Like, nobody can control when a flash flood is going to happen. No one can control that. The only person that can control what goes on is God. I mean, I hope that, I, I wonder why people got start bringing up the saying that, look, a flash flood is a flood that is sent by God. No one in the world, nobody in the city council, Silvina Brooks-Power, nobody can never predict what God is going to do next. I'm in Queens right now, in South Ouzo Park, Queens, and it's a flood-prone district. But we don't know in that two minutes that, that the sky's going to turn brown, black, and it's going to flood right now. Nobody can control that. So it's something that, that God has the plan with a flood, and no one, nothing can never stop what God has stored for anybody here. And let's make that clear, that of course we need shelter, just in case that a flash flood ever happens, or a chronic flood ever happens, but everybody know that the shelters won't do anything but just keep people under safety, because we got, it's, it's lack of bathrooms, lack of showers, lack of proper resources, none of that's going to be there. So the city council need to go, really go back with the OCEM and really design a real plan of what you guys going to do when anything happens, when a, when a flash flood happens. But just saying that, the only way we're going to solve this by providing shelters, it's not going to do anything. Like I said, shelter of the flash floods are all sent by God. That's a divine thing. It's a divine plan.
Your time has expired. Thank you.
So, thank you. Thank you. Enjoy your day.
Thank you for your testimony.
If anyone else online or present would like to testify, please speak up now. Seeing no one, I will turn back to the chair to close out the hearing.
At this time, I'd like to thank our committee counsel, Josh Kingsley, our senior analyst, Will Hungash, and my formidable chief of staff, Phyllis Insirillo, and of course, those, both of you who came here to testify today. I will say that this is a committee, and I know you're new, but this is a committee, and I am a chair that doesn't like "I'll get back to you" as an answer. So let's just try and do better next time. Thank you.
Thank you for having us.